We're ready.
He says it's not us, though. He says it's them. So he said shit now. I'm gonna load them up for you, Paul.
Well, I say the hours take nine, everything hung around a bit in the air.
I can't get into it using Horizon's app.
Yeah, and I wondered.
I was making room for that, too.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Can we see it? Maybe not.
We'll call the meeting to order. I may have to excuse a little bit and I have to do a little more explaining to council. Because I have our, half of us have it up and half of us down. Anyway, we'll go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. Let's go with our monthly department reports, starting with the C O D.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report covering the time range from December 1st through December 31st. Some highlights from the report. We had sixty-three C O D. extensions, we wrote forty-two permits. We had six new business licenses and applications. We had eleven businesses that were closed, but some of those were listed as ownership. So if you compare the list there, you'll see where that occurred. We had the medical office building still ongoing at the hospital site. And they're getting ready to get their temporary C O D. for the shell of the building. Probably within next week. And Shane's Rib Shack wasn't ongoing for project in December, but it's been completed and opened and is ready for business. City Marshal removed thirty-six sites from the roadway, threw out forty-one repair cleanup orders, and investigated five tampering with theft cases. If there's anything else on there you'd like me to discuss other than answer any questions?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Let, go, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. I took the total from our MEAG bill and then took the fixed and did a little calculation. Think this is what Mr. Little was looking for. Our fixed portion of our one point, well, one million fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollar MEAG bill was the fixed portion of that's eighty point four percent. Now, we will be bringing in a document to you all next month. It's about, there's a new law being passed, hopefully being passed at the state level, about solar energy. And inside that solar energy document, it saves the Georgia Territorial Act, which is what we really want. MEAG, George Power, and Oberthor Power, which are the EMCs, are behind this. They've all signed, and we'll be using this eighty point four cents as our calculation to create the rate that we charge for the chargeback. And we need that on file before that law is passed in July. But we'll be bringing that for y'all next month. I'll hopefully get something out to y'all fairly quickly in this month, so you'll have a little time to go over. Telecommunications, top users, one point two terabytes, ninety-four above, three hundred and fifty gig. And our peak usage is still holding out about one and a half gig. We will go into this little big one of the agenda items later on tonight. Got some items of interest. We started engineering and we've actually made the order for the license to be able to double our Quong downstream. What that means is we'll be able to double the bandwidth to each node site. We fixed our bottleneck going back to Atlanta with our air net, and now we've got a bottleneck inside the RF plant. This should take away some of that bottleneck. Completed twenty-five percent of the interduct placement for the South Broad T. That would be the section between Meere Street and Walker Street. So that's in place. They should be pouring sidewalks tomorrow for that section. Then we will jump on to the Walker Street, to Davis Street, and they should be pouring that first to next week. Project's moving along pretty well. Davis-Lacy Street project is moving forward. The contractors getting everything done in a timely manner. Hopefully, they'll be out of here within a month. And that'll all be aluminum instead of copper, have much better reliability in that area. Coal ash update. E P D or EPA, excuse me, has put in a rule. Monitors and regulates coal ash. We own portions of two coal plants. Just to give you an update, there's really no firm idea of what that rule means besides that it's gonna use citizen complaints and lawsuits to move the rule forward. In my humble opinion, we will probably be losing our coal ash ponds in the next forty-two months, which means something has to happen with that coal ash. Dry stack, there's all kinds of processes. Mayor, you can give us a little more that you have. But this will be an impact. What I'm trying to get with this update is it's gonna impact us. And by impacting us, it's gonna impact our rate payers. And everybody's rate payers. George Power's rate payers, the EMC's rate payers, anybody that has a coal plant is gonna be affected. I don't think, well, actually, the law doesn't allow for the EPA to look at economic impact for any rule they make. And the whole idea of this rule is to put coal plants out of business. Understanding we still have a mortgage on both of our coal plants. So whether they make us shut the coal plant down or not, we still gotta pay the mortgage.
And that's, the federal government just found time to shut coal plants down. And that's basically what is happening all over the United States. So, yeah, and it is gonna have a lot of impact, unfortunately. Nothing we can do. That's the elect officials in Washington, not the elect officials in Monroe, Georgia.
I can't quantify that impact. I don't think anybody can. I've been in conversations with some environmental people at MEAG and George Power and EMCs. And nobody knows the real impact until the lawsuits come. And that's what'll happen. It's basically a tool for attorneys to make a move. And we're at the mercy of the rule. Now, that rule can be repealed by act of Congress. Obviously, Congress had to get together and get punched on, so hopefully, they'll all get their act together and repeal that rule because it does impact the lower income section of our community, in every community. I mean, talk about countrywide, at a higher rate than it was, a higher income rate. So hopefully, they'll get their act together and fix that.
But we are fighting.
Oh, we're fighting, yes.
At the federal level, as a matter of fact, I'll be flying to Washington in a couple of months to meet with the folks in Washington and talk about it again. So hopefully, if we keep it out in front of them, you know, they'll actually realize what it does as a rate payer here in the small town USA. So, you know, hopefully, nothing will be done in the next couple of years and the administration will change. And, you know, something's gonna come up. It just depends on how bad it's gonna be.
And I'll keep y'all updated on that, along with the solar thing. Hopefully, I can get out in front of the solar thing and know what the laws, as it turns into more of a document that they're gonna pass, we'll know more of what's gonna happen with it. But I'll keep y'all with that. We do need a policy in place. I'm meeting with Electric City's Thursday to calculate that.
Any questions, Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Finance?
Thank you, Mayor. December was a busy month for property taxes. We had over three thousand five hundred transactions. And over two million dollars for the general. Sales tax, and earnings rate was favored for the last several months. It was under thirty-seven thousand, forty-one dollars. And accounts payable is also busy. With four hundred and seventy checks being issued. The financial report, we are still booking and closing entries and are preparing for auditors to come later this month. And projects, IT upgraded our two thousand and three server a couple of weeks ago. And Steve had to do some problem solving, problem solving last week as people discovered some issues that were going on.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Fire Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This month, we answered a total of two hundred calls for service. Hundred and forty-seven of those calls were med assist type calls. When you look at the total calls of the year, we had two thousand fifty-nine and thirteen hundred and sixty-four of those were med assist calls. Which again states the value that Fire Five is also at the table on being able to respond to medical emergencies, usually a little more than the ambulance service or the M P's and guide or train handle, so less of a problem. They conducted a total of four thousand and fifty-two training hours for the year, with three hundred and forty-one training hours for this year. Basically, that's about it for March and December. They participated this year with a program that we have with Shop with Hero. We've done shop with cops for about ten years. And Fire Five has definitely had a real, benefited a lot of kids. It was good for both the police officers that participated and the firefighters. And we really appreciate them participating in that and depending on your questions, sir.
Any questions on fire? All right, move to the place, Mark.
Police Department answered four three hundred and thirty-three calls for service. Had two hundred and fifty court cases in the municipal court. Conducted two hundred and four six hours of training. Arrested sixty-nine adults, four juveniles. And if you saw, we're doing a little, doing a little talk thing with the little local TV thing about trash. And our commuter service folks picked up six underpaid, but we talked about the trash out there. And, you know, it takes a special kind of person to throw a hamburger sack out the window. And I guess that's where I'm gonna leave my comment, a little statement. Take the trash home, just don't throw it out. We appreciate you doing that. Any questions, sir?
Any questions, Chief Glass? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Solid place.
Thank you, Mayor. All of our tonnage is up in December. Transport station tonnage is up, what we collect on the commercial side and residential side. Other than that, all of the stats are pretty slow, pretty basic. Did issue eight cemetery permits in December. So I take any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mayor?
Thank you.
Jeremiah, streets and transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just highlighted a few areas from the report for the month of December. On the admin side, we've cleared out the community building five times, our fleet maintenance division. Completed one hundred different work orders or corrected maintenance in the month of December. Total about a year, at just over thirteen hundred units. Our ground crew picked up a little bit over a half ton of lead throughout the city, our street division. They're still in our winter, I guess, maintenance plan mode, mindset, however you wanna call it. It's not really the time of year to pay roads or build sidewalks, so to speak. But we're currently involved in several road repair projects and building some shoulders. We'll see a lot of machinery in the road over the next couple of weeks. Build some shoulders on the road compared to last year. So expect some traffic delays going around that machinery. Potholes are terrible right now. We're getting on those just as fast as they reported. Where we have these hard freezes at night. If there's any kind of moisture in the road, they get in these cracks. It freezes, expands, the next day you got a pothole pretty much. So we're attacking those as we get those. Moving on into our sign markings division. Steve Laven played six hundred and thirty-one work orders throughout the year. Total of twenty-five in the month of December. Our build maintenance division, they continue to work repairing stuff as it needs. They ended up with just over eight hundred work orders completed for the month, or for the year. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions regarding streets and trains.
Jeremiah, over there between Breedlove and Ammons Bridge on Al Kobe, there's a, it just reminded me about the garbage. Just really bad right there. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. That stretch on Al Kobe between Breedlove and Ammons Bridge. When Chief Glass mentioned it, it popped back in my head. I drove by there two days ago and thought to call you.
There's still some political signs.
I forgot.
Growing in the weeds, or the weeds are growing over them, right there across from Club Sign.
If I didn't tell you now, I'd forget again. That's why.
Any other questions, Jeremiah? Jeremiah, water, sewer, and gas, stormwater, Rodney?
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the water plan goes, we're averaging, for the month of December, two point two million gallons per day. Water distribution, we noticed the service leak, service cost sixty-four. And it's continued to rise since January and also seen it so far in February due to the weather. Water treatment plant, we're averaging about one point six per day treated. Everything's pretty much normal on the wastewater collection side. Natural gas, we are seeing the sales start to increase at the thirty-seven MCF, thirty-seven thousand MCF so. Stormwater, everything's pretty normal there. As far as the training center goes, we held four classes in the month of December, twelve attended. December is usually our slowest month. And then we've continued our repair of system leaks and water, which I mentioned before. And then two thousand thirteen, C D V G, that contractor has started pipe bursting. He's currently, I think, he's got about eighteen hundred feet in, so they're moving very quick. Definitely got a good contractor this time. Everything went very well. Got any questions, Rodney?
Any questions, Rodney? Thank you, Rodney. That concludes our department report. Moving to our committee information, starting with finance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items on the agenda for today. First being the renewal of our health insurance. And Jim, believe, you're gonna talk about that.
The good news is I don't have any bad news. Mr. Mayor, council, good evening. Nice to be here. Let me just start by saying a couple of things. The claims experience for the city this year has been phenomenal compared to your maximum cost. Your maximum cost through, my report shows January, was just over, your liability would have been something around one point seven million. You only had spent about a million forty thousand dollars in claims. So the experience has been very, very positive, which was a direct reflection on the kind of increases we got this year, which meant a decrease. Overall, we are looking at a five point four seven percent decrease in maximum cost. That represents about a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars decrease from last year's maximum cost. So it's been, it's been a very, very good year. I know we had, I think you asked me last year, what would I do in face of the increases from the bad experience? And we stayed the course and it's really paid off. With a new clinic, new plant changes and so forth, it's having a cumulative effect. It's really been a good story for the city. So there's not a lot more for me to kinda go over other than that. Normally, in this market, with healthcare reform, you just don't see rate decreases. But the city's taken some pretty proactive steps and it's really paid off. It really has. So kudos for the decision makers. Any questions? That may be the shortest presentation I've ever made.
It's shorter than I think.
Good news is always easy to deliver. Okay? Anything? Thank you.
Need to manage now before the committee. Need a motion to recommend the healthcare renewal to full capacity.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. We'll present that to the full council next Tuesday. Insular insurance, dental and line, Joel Blue.
Good evening, city council and mayor. Appreciate the time. The good news is, it's good news. It's not as good as the last one, of course. They put me second, which is a little offensive, but that's okay. I'll remember that for later. In presenting the dental insurance this year, we had the fortunate opportunity of dealing with Delta Dental and the process of renewal. And luckily, hopefully, you all were able to receive the most recent information from yesterday. We shopped this with multiple carriers this year, three others to be exact. Initially, Delta Dental came in with an eight point nine percent increase. And with claims utilization this year a little over seventy percent, it's actually right about accurate, based off historical data. The good news is, after seeing Guardian, Unum, and Renaissance Dental, Delta Dental was able to come back with less than a six, or right around a six percent increase, including now a two-year rate guarantee, which, again, don't know how we got that, but we did. We were fortunate. It wasn't my beautiful face, I promise. But we were lucky this year to get that. With Guardian, the cheapest was, the next cheapest was Guardian. And Guardian ran about seven point five percent of an increase. Overall, that will equal the city in your expenditure around six thousand dollars this year for a twelve-month cycle. The good news on the other lines of coverage, before we go back to dental and get questions for whatever you all may have, all the other lines were either a zero percent increase based off negotiations or they were for a rate guarantee year, meaning there was no increase because they will not renew until 2016, so. The good news is, from a Delta perspective, if you pick Delta, it's a two-year rate guarantee. So next year, we wouldn't even have much of a conversation other than whatever happened on the disability and ancillary, other ancillary coverages. Those lines, that line will stay the same. So just be aware of that, kinda as you look at the Delta Dental process or conversation. So if you guys have any, again, try to be quick and painless, but if you guys have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Kate, now the matter before the committee. I need a motion to recommend the renewal of the ancillary insurance coverages to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll present that to full council next Tuesday. Last but certainly not least, property casualty worker's comp, Bob Seville.
Those are hard acts to follow. But we're good. We're at one point eight percent. I was gonna say two, but after Jim, I had to drop it to one point eight. And most, not much changed on the property and casualty. We spent a lot of time this year, kept Debbie busy upgrading the fleet. Had a lot of changes in vehicles, and that's really where the increase came from. So outside of that, there's not much different. Any questions?
We got a question, about six thousand, sixty-one hundred dollars over the course of the year.
That's good. I mean, the industry's around, they're trying to get five percent across the board, so. I just tell them how good you are and they drop it.
Okay. Matters before the committee. Need a motion to recommend the renewal of the property casualty workers' comp to the full council.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Have a motion second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll present that, the property casualty renewal to the full council next Tuesday as well. That's all we have. Finance committee, Mayor.
Okay. Air Force?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items. I gotta read them minutes from the last minute.
They're just in there for information. They can read them.
Oh, okay. You wanna go over the approval of the fuel farm?
I can, but I've got Mr. Mark Countz here with Barge Wagner, and he's gonna do the presentation.
Okay.
Probably do a lot better job explaining it than I can.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening. What we would like to basically go over is the process and the ultimate, final recommendation on the fuel farm. We, with the help of individuals here in the city, we have submitted five requests for bids for a fuel farm. And we looked at three different sized tanks. We looked at an eight thousand, a ten thousand gallon, and a twelve thousand gallon. This is an above-ground fuel farm, which can basically just be brought in on a tanker truck and set down, hooked up with a card reader, where pilots could come in at any time during the night with their card, basically fill their tanks up, charge to their credit card, and just kinda be on their way. So we will not have to have a full-time person designated to actually be there to be a fuel person during any off-hours as well. But we did submit out to five potential suppliers for the fuel farm. We received three bids back from A B A Con, Aviation Services, C N M Equipment and Fuel Tech Incorporated. They ranged from a hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to ninety-seven thousand. And the third one was one hundred five twenty-two. The low bidder on this, or the low supplier that provided us the bid, the quote was C N M Equipment for the ninety-seven thousand, and that was for the ten thousand gallon fuel tank. And there's a little caveat to try to keep this amount under the hundred thousand dollars in order that we would not have to go out for competitive bids. We can just request quotes. So we wouldn't have to do any design drawings. And in order to capture that, that under one hundred thousand dollars, which the state would allow us to not go out to the competitive bids, but do the quoting process. So we got everything we needed. Basically, the ninety-seven thousand dollars is a turnkey, includes everything, including the concrete pad that the tank would need to be, that would be placed on. So there are some items included in that ninety-seven thousand that the city may opt to do themselves, so that would reduce that ninety-seven thousand back. But we are, we have applied for a grant, an FAA grant, for ninety percent of the ninety-seven thousand dollars. So anything that the city can do would act as their ten percent in-kind service. And therefore, that would be deducted back out. So I guess tonight, we're just asking for approval on the low bid for C N M Equipment for a ten thousand gallon fuel tank to be installed at the airport.
And a caveat to that is upon the completion of the short.
Short, yeah. We're currently working on the short environmental assessment, which is a requirement in order to get the fuel farm. So my firm, Barge Wagner, is currently working on that. And we should have that over the next several weeks to submit to FAA for approval.
Right. And then the attorney's contract, of course, have to approve that. But what we're asking is approval to do this now, so we don't have to come back later and then burp at the lake.
And approval for up to, not to exceed the ninety-seven thousand dollars. That would be the maximum. And hopefully, it would come in a lot less than that with the in-kind service that the city may can provide.
Any more questions? I'll make the motion that we approve the low bid from C N M Equipment, not to exceed ninety-seven thousand dollars. Again, it's contingent upon the completion of the short environmental assessment. And of course, the contract being approved by our city attorney.
Is this before the whole council or in the committee? Okay.
Yes, we motioned second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Item passed. We'll present this to regular council meeting next week, Mr. Mayor. That's all we have.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bellwork?
Yes, Mayor. We have one item. The item is the purchase, discussion, approval of the purchase of a 2016 front loader garbage truck. And I'm gonna do that again.
Thank you, Ms. Stacey. Yeah, we're asking approval to purchase this truck, 2016 front load of garbage truck. It's a Mack truck with a high volume, and it's to be purchased through the National Joint Piles Alliance, and the national contract, joint, the contract price is $238,001, over $1. And we ask you to splash, it's always splash fund, the budget's CFPI. If you have any notes and additional information, use some background on the installation, and I asked Chris Bailey, if he would, to be, um, answering any questions we may have concerning the procurement process. If you have any question, it is asking best care.
Chris? Chris, does anybody got a question, Chris?
Okay, with no questions, I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this purchase.
Second.
It's been motion and second, all in favor, I sign aye. All opposes? All right, well, the motion carries, we'll take this to the full council, next meeting, Tuesday, next Tuesday. Thank you, mayor, that's it.
Okay. Utilities?
Thank you, mayor. First item is a discussion or approval of Walmart Distribution sewer credits, Mr. Middlebrook.
Thank you, Ms. Little. The tax is a letter from the Walmart Distribution Center, uh, Center, I'm sorry. They're asking, uh, basically what they want to do is install a sewer meter. They're paying the 40 to 45% of the water that they use is actually evaporated and never makes it to the sewer. So they're paying sewer bills on water that we're not treating. Uh, we have done this in the past, uh, last time was in the old deal of, uh, 11 South Broad Street. Basically, what they would do is, they would pay for the meter, install it, maintain it, we would just drop by every month, read the meter, and bill the sewer accordingly. So nothing out of the way, uh, just wanted to make it, you know, bring it to y'all's attention. My recommendation would be just to have you at the same level in the bill, all of their costs.
What, what happened last time they tried this?
What, what?
Didn't you say, "We've done this before," yeah?
We've done it with the bill.
For them.
Oh, not for them. I'm sorry. Not for Walmart Distribution Center?
No.
No, no. They're currently paying, they're currently paying the full sewer bill for water that they're using.
You think that's like a corporate initiative, like, big time?
Well, if you read the letter, they're saying that several others, including Atlanta area, and DeKalb County, have all allowed them to, they actually give them credits for the ventilation.
Well, if you do what you're suggesting, right, by putting the meter in, there really is a, a fair way of measuring what, what is going into the sewer system, so. There was an appropriate thing for us to bill for, because that's what's happening.
That's true.
But they would pick up all the cost of paying the meter.
On the counter, where?
They'd agree to do that.
Not really.
I mean, that option might be extended to anybody that's willing to pay the cost of installing the meter, because we really don't want to charge for water we're not treating.
Right.
But, yeah.
They're very expensive, and they're very expensive to maintain, and that's why.
That's why we can't do it.
Yeah, my conversation with them was, you know, you agree to pay for maintaining the, I don't see a problem with it.
I don't think you're gonna see people jumping on the bandwagon. It wouldn't residential, nobody has their own.
But they probably wouldn't do it if they didn't think they were.
If they're losing 40% in back for ventilation, they would pay for themselves, and that's, you know, that's fine.
Because then it's tied to the sewer as well.
Right.
They're saying 560 to 630,000 gallons a year, so.
That's a lot.
That's quite a bit.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion from the committee?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
That's motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will recommend that to full council. Next item, Georgia Pipeline Emergency Responders Initiative, that's also yours.
Thank you, Ms. Little. You may remember this from, I think it was the December meeting, this was the gas journey that, uh, it's called G-Per, is the Georgia Pipeline Emergency Responders Initiative. Basically, what happened back in 2012, the Public Service Commission funded the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs, basically gave them some funding to work on a, or some type, some type of training for pipelines, so they would understand how to respond to those safely, and also the emergency response, uh, when you did have a natural gas explosion. Through that, it's like I said, it's been going on since 2012, they, they reached a point where now they're ready to push it out to the communities, and in order to do that, it's gonna require funding from all the gas systems. I had some concerns, those have been addressed, so I'm asking to, to go ahead and proceed for this, it'd be a three-year agreement, $1,200 per year, and this would provide training for our local, our, the city's fire department, and also county fire department. That training would take place at our facility. We don't get any money off of it, but it does bring us some, some, uh, some PR, I guess, get some down there and let them see it, and hopefully it'll grow a little something.
What are you really asking us to approve?
Just in order to enter into this agreement with them for $1,200 per year for three years.
Were a membership in that?
Membership into the, to the G-Per, or the, the Georgia Pipeline Emergency Responders Initiative.
Typically, all agreements, we're, we're not authorized to, to execute. We're not authorized to execute, we're not stipulated, or at least that's what the attorneys call us, as the staff.
And it is a multi-year agreement?
I think, I think this one is, can't buy it or something, okay.
We could do it, but it wouldn't be binding, if, if something happened, they would.
It seems to me that the, uh, you know, the concerns you had are valid, but it seems like they're trying to get something going, and it will bring publicity, since you have got them to agree to do the training to, at our training center, which could be good publicity for future, and I think that it'd.
Maybe like Warren County, maybe Covington would, would ask to use our facility, since it would be more hands-on, you know, there's a possibility we could, we could hold.
And the training needs to, and, and in the spirit of cooperation with the state to have full participation, yeah, I think that it'd be a good idea. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to, that we enter into the agreement, I think for, for $1,200 a year, the publicity we get for our training centers work more than that.
So motions are second?
I'll second.
So motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion, we'll recommend it to council. Mr. Thompson, residential terms of use agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Our residential terms of use agreement's been on books for several years now, this is for our internet customers. And we've been talking about the past several months, of some customers over utilizing the system beyond what our terms of use allowed, but we also understood that our terms of use was a little, a little tight on that, now that it was sort of written before all the Netflix and streaming videos, and it was, it was a little tight on the amount of data that they could download. What we've done over the past couple of months is look at Comcast, look at Charter, look at their agreements, and get more in line with them, and that, that moves that up to 350 gig. Took Mr. Little's suggestion, and went and found a, a way to monetize that, not cut the customer off, but give the customer an added fee for beyond that 350 gig, if they're willing to pay that fee, they can stay on, and that is exactly, we mirrored Comcast agreement for that, that's $10 per 50 gig, so the way Comcast works, once you hit that 50 gig over, you get $10. Let's say you hit 351 gig in a month, you get a letter from us, a phone call, an email saying, hey, watch your usage, you know, you might need to go to a commercial package, there might be something else we can do for you. Once you get to that 351, you get $10 more a month, and then for every 50 gig above that, it continues $10. Now, to make you aware of how many customers that impacts, it's less than 4% of our network. So it's not a large number of people, but the top 25 or 30 are wearing the network out. You've got to realize, a cable plant is a shared network, so if all of y'all are on one node, and I'm included, and I'm running 10 or 12 terabytes a month, or two or three terabytes a month, you're gonna have trouble getting to the internet, and that's some of our problems, we're not, we haven't been policing that to a point where we need to. With our new company that we're using for provisioning, that can give us more detailed reports, we're able to catch that a little quicker in the front, the front end. The other line that's changed in the agreement is, was at the suggestion of the attorneys, the FCC has passed, well, actually, the FCC and another part of the federal, the FTC, have passed a copyright protection law. And basically, that protects the Sony Music, the Sony Movies, you know, all these people that make movies that have copyrighted material, it protects them from their product being stolen through the internet. We implemented a, a policy back when that law was passed that goes with that law, and basically it is, is you get caught once, it's a three-day turnoff, you get caught twice, it's a seven-day, you get caught a third time, you're no longer our customer for an extended period of time. And the reason is, each one of these instances can be $50 to $100,000, they can come after the, the owner of the IP address, well, the city of Monroe is the owner of the IP address, and to keep that liability off the city of Monroe, we have to have a policy in place, and so the attorneys asked that we add this to, to the list, to make you underwear, make you aware of how serious this is. We had a, a subpoena from a federal judge saying, I need the names of people that have these IP addresses, about 20 of them, and we had to turn over the names of 20 of our customers to a federal judge in California, that they're being sued by a company called Rights Corp. And it's unfortunate, but people don't understand, when you're on the internet, it's a movie, it's a copyrighted material, you can't get it for free. Somebody might give it to you for free, but once you get it, they're gonna find you eventually, and when they find you, they're gonna get you. Most of the time, after just one occurrence, the, the copyright person just lets it go, lets them go on about their business, second or third, they come after, they start suing. So a lady in South Georgia paid $51,000 for four movies, for four songs, because they wanted to make a example out of her, and her kids did it, but the responsibility lies in the owner of the IP address, which is the name on the account. So be careful what your kids do, be careful what anybody comes over to your house do, does, and lock down your Wi-Fi network. We tell customers that every day, lock down your Wi-Fi network. Now, I'll take any questions.
Let's just make sure everybody understands, just for the average user, it's not going to be a, a note and rate.
Out of, out of 3,000 and some odd customers there, we've got less than 90, I think it's 92 last month, 92 or 93?
Just want to make sure everybody understands that.
This is a, this is a, this is a protection for your average, everyday customer. I've got an employee who watches Netflix pretty much all the time, and he uses around, I think it's 225, 230 gig. It's, it's a lot of days to get through that 50 gig, and the most people that are gonna be hit by this are the gamers, the guys that download tons and tons of games online, if you look at the forums where people are complaining about Comcast, it's the guys that are downloading 200 gigs of games a month, but they're also watching Netflix 24 hours a day. So they're streaming something constantly off the internet.
But it's a fair, it's a fair policy, based on people that are using it the most, and it is an industry standard.
Very much an industry, actually, we're above most of the other providers, we're vying more, and we're charging less for the overage. We're also, this, this number, this 350 gig, I bet you we're back addressing this in the future and moving that up, because as the, as the industry moves, more and more and more stuff is being streamed by the customers, so we'll keep an eye on this, we'll watch what Comcast does, we'll watch what AT&amp;T does, and we'll stay ahead of them as we move forward.
And the $10 charge for the, when you go over the 350?
Yes, sir.
That's for 50?
50 gig.
Or any portion thereof?
Now, the way Comcast is doing is that 50, you know, it's 50 plus one, you're getting a warning from 351 to 50, and I understand why they're doing that, because you have to have triggers inside your software.
401 is only one $10 charge.
Are those, this is gonna catch those people that are reselling?
Yes, sir.
Now, are they gonna get a notice, are you warning these guys, or are they just?
We're going to, uh, we're going to, by the way, I think a male stuffer's number one, putting the new policy out there, we're gonna take a couple of months and inform people, we're gonna take a couple of months and say, hey, you know, call the people that are above, say, hey, you know, this is what's happening, this is what's about coming down the pipe, and this is what's about to happen.
What's an, what's an example of like a bill that one of those guys you think's stealing?
Oh, the Terrabit?
Yeah, what would their bill be?
I mean, it is several hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Well, they just say a Terrabit.
It doesn't matter, it's $500 or something.
No, it's $500, easy, but I mean, those are the guys that are abusing the system and abusing our, our network.
They need to explore another option, probably, with us, if they have a legitimate need.
If they have a legitimate need, we will explore whatever we can, if somebody on Terrabit needs to be, what we're gonna talk about next, on a fiber-type customer.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's where we're headed in the next, next agenda.
So I mean, even if there's a legitimate need for that, it's not through just a residential internet connection.
I will tell you this, we do not have a business in town on this list.
Yeah.
That would make this list.
So they're absolutely reselling internet?
They're, well, some are, some are just gamers, like I said, they're downloading 300, 400 gigs of games to their PlayStation every week, and that is a legitimate use of the internet, but it is also, I go to work, I turn my PlayStation on to download games all day, I'm, I'm throttling everybody else's internet router.
Yeah.
So you can't impact that one.
Is there a motion to approve the new residential terms of use agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve this agreement.
So motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We recommend that to council next week.
Thank you.
Your next item is the wireless fiber pricing.
Yes, sir, we have, as you know, been exploring wireless internet for last mile service for customers, and we have had a project in place for about a month, dentist office next to a Home Depot, uh, in the, where the Greek restaurant is in that little strip mall. The deployment of wireless is minimal compared to what we're doing with fiber, or even cable TV, and so what we're asking for you to do is to set some residential and commercial wireless plans. Now, when I say wireless, we're gonna use that, and we plan on using that or implementing that, in places where we don't have wired infrastructure, whether it is economically unfeasible to build a fiber line, let's talk about the dentist office, where we'd have to bore state highway, and they would have to deal with a gas pipeline, and by the time you do all that, you're $10,000, $15,000 deep and feet, and go into one customer, maybe two customers, there's no way I can make that work. Well, the desk is about, he said he's about to close up shop, he's a, uh, he's owned by a corporate entity, most of his software and computing power is off-site, so he does it in the cloud. I said, dude, I'll try to help you. So we went out there, and for about $1,200, we deployed a wireless hotspot, pointed at that facility that can serve, has the capacity to serve every one of those buildings in there, and we're gonna go after every one of them as soon as we get something like this approved. And he's been running for a month, he's as happy as he can, but he's just waiting for his turn phone coming, so he can get away, get away from Windstream. So the product works, and it works in certain applications, there are places where, you know, heavy trees, real hilly, you're gonna serve about 80, 85% of the customers that need to be served in a certain area economically. There are ways to serve everybody, but you just gotta put that on the customer. Let's talk about inside Monroe, there's a subdivision at the end of Michael Exon Road that we never did put communications into, mainly because of the rock, the cost for putting that in there was just astronomical, it was a lot of blasting that EMC had to do. This can be used to serve that, there's about 80 homes in there, and those guys come, are coming to me pretty regularly, their homeowners association, saying, hey, we want to be served because Windstream's pulling. Those guys come, are coming to me pretty regularly in their homeowners association, saying, hey, we want to be served because Windstream's pulling about two and a half meg. So that's what, that's what we're asking for, these pricing, and where we got the pricing, we went to a couple of different WISPs. Wireless Internet Service Providers are called WISPs, it's a new term that I just picked up over the past month. And we sort of blended their, their payment scale and came out with this. It meets, it's very competitive on the Windstream market. Just to let you know, for three meg, I paid fifty-nine dollars to Windstream, and I've never hit one. So if we can figure out how to deploy this in the gratis area, I'll be a happy guy. But very competitive, the one thing you've got to remember, this is a bidirectional. So a ten-meg package is ten meg down, ten meg up, which really helps with, uh, the home automation type stuff. Now, the next line in that is a fiber service plan, and just to let you know, hybrid fiber coax is not the technology of the future. Our standard cable TV, you will never see me come back to y'all and say, we need to build another cable TV product. The last project that we built were the apartments off the end of, um, Walton, Walton Street, they come off of the Plaza Drive. That's the actual last physical plant we put in, we put in what's called an RFoN project. RFoN is RF over glass, basically, it's a, a product that emulates cable TV at the end of a piece of glass. We have almost zero customer complaints there. Mainly because you have a glass wire, and you have a fiber going right out there and feeding the sound, so your noise issues are nil. Any greenfield, any new subdivision, we will be building fiber. And so what we're asking for with the fiber part of that is a base charge to start off with, and that will be about a, in line with a fifteen-megabit plan up there. But with fiber, you, you don't want to limit yourself, there are options with fiber. As Mr. Little brought up, some of these customers that might have a legitimate plan, or legitimate something where they need more bandwidth. If, uh, Mr. Bradley comes in and wants a hundred meg in his house, it's possible over fiber. But that is a outside of a regional, I said, more like our commercial product that we're selling. So that's a, a different product. Once we test these products out and get them going, we'll come back to you with a more expansive-type person, like a price of plan. And I'll take any questions you may have, I know it's a little complicated, it's, it's new stuff, we're real excited.
You, you said like on the dentist, the ROI is like twelve months.
Oh, no, yeah, he's, he's going to be, end up paying, his bill, once we get the phone fixed, is going to be around three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
And if you pick up a neighbor, it's six months, and it's nothing.
I will not, I will not suggest we do a project that's over a fourteen, fifteen-month ROI.
When you said that subdivision was, Windstream's pulling two-point-five?
Yeah.
You're, we're doing ten, you're saying?
Well, I can do ten, I can do twenty, over this wireless stuff, I can do it for twenty-five.
But our basic is five, four times better than Windstream.
At ten dollars cheap.
Yeah. I think it's a no-brainer.
And you've got to think, once this, once this, this initial infrastructure cost is so low, we have, uh, we worked with a, with an engineer from South Africa came in and talked to us last week. He deployed over six thousand of these units in South Africa, because they just don't have the fiber infrastructure. And we got a lot of knowledge from him, and some guys from Columbia County that do, they actually do our, uh, our nine-one-one integration between O'Conne County, Newton County, that's all done wirelessly. And these guys did that, and they came up and they deployed a lot of this product. And we got a lot of information from them, so we're really gleaning information from all kind of, uh, different industry professionals, people that have done this in the past. We're going to crawl before we walk, and walk before we run, and once we get it going well, I think, you know, we do this every day on the cable TV. We manage customers, that's the easy part for us. And we own the fiber, and the fiber is a known entity, it's out there, it's paid for, and for the majority of our fiber, a lot of our fiber is paid for by somebody else.
There's absolutely zero like anti-competition issues with Windstream?
Unlicensed spectrum. Right now, uh, it's free to put wherever you want to put it, as long as the county in question doesn't have strong right-of-way, uh, rules. And Walton County doesn't, now, I'm going to work with Walton County, I've got a, a colleague with them already. But I want to work with them on what's called small cell technology, that's coming, that's coming everywhere. We need, we need to have an ordinance for that, the, uh, the county needs to have an ordinance for that, and we'll, we'll use this experience we do in this project in, in creating that ordinance.
You know, like a, like a Bankers' Grove?
Well, Bankers' Grove's wired.
I know, but if you had this before?
I've had this before, I've done this.
There's no way you would have put it in the ground.
I'd have put either fiber or this.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve the wireless fiber pricing as presented? Motion's a second.
A second.
Motion's second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll present that to full council next week. Thank you, Mayor, that's all we have.
We don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Crosby. It is exciting, an economic development side, you heard Patrick Meechey, we already have some of the new businesses recently, and some of the grand openings were there, so Ms. Crosby could share some.
Yeah, we do, we have, uh, we've had vintage revivals, the new, a new large business that took the place of Cherry Hill, and so that's open. And we have, when you just drive down Broad Street, you'll see a lot of renovations that are going on in spaces. And so we'll have a lot of new openings within the historic core of the city over the next few months. So that's exciting to see our, our vacancy rate to begin to decrease, and even interest in some of the outlying buildings from the commercial centers. So we're excited about that, having lots of meetings with potential new businesses and developers, so everything's, I feel optimistic about two thousand and fifteen as far as development. And honestly, projects like making wireless and Internet available is going to be a big driver, because that amenity is, is huge for people locating in areas, business and residential. So we're excited to see all those improvements coming. We, um, we finished up our January season of events and activities, we had over seven hundred and fifty people come out to skate on our little ice skating experiment. And we're excited about how to grow that in the future, now we got through this first round, we'll, we've learned, we've under, we understand it better, we had a great working relationship with the, the vendor who provided that, so we're excited about the upcoming years. And, um, we're in the beginning of our sponsorship drive with downtown and raising funds for the Boost Monroe Program, which I've mentioned before. That's going to put grants into the hands of small business owners in Monroe, so we're excited to see that moving ahead. Um, the dog park funds were raised, um, all from private donations, and so that fence has gone into Childers, and the other pet cleanup stations and benches will also be installed over the next month or so, and we'll have a grand opening for that. And it's just great to see so many more people engaging with making things happen in their community. As far as promotion for Monroe as a whole, some things you'll see over the next couple of months, the new antique festival that we're partnering with the Chamber to do, that's going to be in April, we're hoping that that will eventually rival Brazelton's Festival, we're excited about promoting that. We're actually going to be running a group ad with all of, with Walton County, so Social Circle, Loganville, and Monroe are partnering together, their CBB. We'll be running an ad in Southern Living, actually promoting that festival and the region. Also, we're now featured on the Farmy Endor Tour, I don't know if you've ever heard of this, but this is, um, Morgan County primarily, Newton County, and now they've added Walton County. So we're a part of this too, and it's celebrating our farmer's market and our agricultural, and William Harris Homestead and Agricultural Centers here in Walton County. So it's great to see these partnerships with other organizations and surrounding counties to really get a regional punch. And I think that's going to have an impact when it comes to economic development. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you. All right, we'll move into items of discussion. Uh, have a resolution for Bank of America purchasing cards.
Um, yeah, we're getting ready to, um, roll out the P-cards, but we want to just do it on a trial basis, and we have to adopt this resolution in order to do that. Or once we do that, we'll probably have maybe department heads, just a few people, testing it for a while, just to see how it works. We'll come back with some policies and procedures for you to adopt, and, um, there'll be strict rules, that sort of thing. So, um, you'll be hearing more about this, but this is just the first step.
And it's Bank of America versus a local bank?
Oh, Bank of America has a state contract on that, so, um, it's all regulated that way, um, they handle all the rebates, which you actually get rebates, and that sort of thing, so.
Any other questions on that? Uh, we'll have a resolution in the City DG two thousand and fifteen, Rodney, you want to say anything about that?
Uh, I need the location, that's going to be the Fifth and Sixth Street. And then this one's going to be a little different, it's actually going to be a, a storm drain, water sewer, and actually repaving, actually redoing the whole street, they're going to do to the water and sewer and all been under, under the road. Uh, and there's hardly any right-of-way there, so we're going to put everything back in the road. So basically, they'll take everything back down to the base, and get a whole new road on both of those streets, so we'll just be able to do Fifth and Sixth, and not, and we'll do, the next year, we'll do the second, uh, Third and Fourth Streets.
Those streets won't be any wider though, will they?
No.
Is that new curve?
No, that is just improved.
Uh, item three, discussion approval of the LCI Street Scape Light, lighting improvement, and that's on Walton Broad Street, that, that's our next big project, if you want to say anything about that.
It's just the, um, the actual agreement we've already, uh, approved during the project, um, so.
Okay, item four is the appointment of the, um, tree board, we actually had a tree board last year, we just never appointed, or I never appointed one, so we did it ahead of schedule. Uh, item five is the appointment of the Historic Reservation Commission, uh, we have an appointment there. Item six is, um, approval of the Main Street Memorandum of Understanding. What is that? Main Street, huh?
Yes, it's the.
That's just something we sign every year?
It's the annual, the DCA, the city's obligation, the DCA's.
Okay, and item seven is the approval of the museum lease agreement, you want to say anything about that?
We'll have the lease agreement ready for review next Tuesday, but we did go ahead and include the key points, the key terms of the lease agreement, which you can see there. It's for part of this partial space on the first floor of Old City Hall to get the museum up and going, and if you have any questions about the details, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, no other business, we need a motion to adjourn?
So, no.
That's about as tough, that's about as bad as it's ever been. Any votes? Maybe you can.